Good evening, everyone. Oops. There it is. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the October 21st meeting of the Auburn School Committee. Please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, the nation under God, indivisible, just as for all.
All right. Let's begin with introductions down here to my left, please.
Brian Carrier, Mayor's Representative.
Faith Fontaine at Large.
Erin Mathie, Ward Three.
Pam Hart, Ward Two.
Ward Four.
Dave Simpson at Large.
All doing the shuffle. All right, everyone, let's start with our consent agenda this evening. Can I get a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda, which includes the approval of the October 7th minutes, as well as the certificated nominations for Trevor Luce and Jody Brinson, please? Thank you, Brian Bownap, and I'll take a second as Brian Carrier. All those in favor? Standing unopposed, motion passes. Also, I should mention, Dan Posen will be a little late joining us this evening. All right, public participation this evening. Public participation looks a little bit differently in that people are being asked to communicate with us this evening through the, in the community room, which is located across the hall. So if anyone at this time would like to join us for public participation, please approach the podium. Yeah, and for those of you in school committee here who weren't here earlier, or council, city council did this the other, on Monday evening, I believe. So Michelle's gonna go take a peek. I don't know that I saw anyone in there.
There was, there was one in there that came in earlier. I wanted to do them in there.
Oh, okay. Nope. All right, there's no one in there this evening. Okay. Move on. No presentation this evening, so we're gonna move to the superintendent's report. Dr. Brown.
Figure out which is white. Not that one. Lie down, hang on. Is that one? Oh, that's beautiful. Hold on, I can't see. Glasses, so.
Okay, so I have a few items on my agenda. The first is, I want to let the committee know that the USDA has extended the school meal participation program through the end of this year. That's great news for our families. The caveat to the good news is that we still need families to fill out their free and reduced applications for us. And the reason for that is our federal funds are based on those numbers. And if they are under-reported, then we will lose money. So we need to ask that our families fill that out and get those back to their building administrators.
And regardless if you qualify or not, you have to fill out the form.
Yes, we ask everyone to fill it out, and those assessments are made by Chris Piercy. But please fill out the forms, it's very, very important to all of our federal programs. The second is that-
Sorry, Dr. Brown, before you go on, when you say through the end of this year, do you mean the 2020 school year, or the 2021? Are we good through June of 2021?
Yes, we're good through June of 2021. Thank you for that clarification. The second is that City Manager Kroll spoke with me and asked to have the fourth floor closed for Election Day. And that is because of a concern for parking and the activity that will be here in Auburn Hall. And therefore, we are all going to work remotely on November 3rd. There will not be anybody here on the fourth floor. If someone needs something from the superintendent's office, we ask them to either make arrangements ahead of time, or to email one of us. Michelle and I will be in the building someplace. We haven't decided which building drew the short straw to get the superintendent for the day, but one of them, one of them will get it. So same is true for the assistant. So just please know on that day, we're not going to be in. The next item on my list is data. For those of you who know me, I absolutely love data, and I've spent the last, oh, months, six weeks, taking a really deep dive into the scores. And this stems from the goals that the committee set back in July, adopted in August, and they are intended to really bring up our student achievement levels. And those achievement levels include scores on the MEA, graduation rates. And so among the things that I'm looking at includes all of the schools that are in the same free and reduced bands that our schools are in, and there are some surprises in that mix, I'm going to share that with you in January. I'm looking at all of our STAR data. I'm looking at teacher grades and how we assess our students. I'm looking at the student attendance, and then I'm looking at the correlation between all of those things. And I've met with two of three principals right now to look at their data and to get their ahahas as I sit and talk with them. And it's just, it's very, it's just fascinating to me. We spent three hours this morning talking with the administrators about their building data, about what it means, about what it means to raise expectations in their schools, and how their data will bear that out. And it's just been a very rich conversation. The only hiccup that we have is we have to use the last full data set that we have, and that's the 2018-19 scores. You may recall that there was no testing done in 2019-20, so I don't have those numbers. The DOE is saying there will be an assessment for 2020-21, but what that assessment's going to look like yet has not been determined. But we are having very rich conversations, and including not only administrators but teachers. Each Sunday night, I send out a letter, and I invite people to come in on things that I put in my letter, and I get great feedback. So that's been a very, very nice way to meet people and to talk with them and to listen to what, what they think about our schools and scores and what we can do to help the achievement of our students. And then on that theme, in January, preferably the first meeting, if that's okay with the Chair, I'd like to present what I see as the state of the schools. And it will be a conversation, following up on the conversation that we had in July, when we looked at where you want to see the schools go, and I think it will have, at that point, the benefit of someone who's been here for about six months, new set of eyes, looking at your data and, and what I can see. As I said when I was interviewed, one of the first things that you have to do if you want to improve your system is put your system under a microscope and find out what you're doing well and what you're not doing well. And that in large measure will be what the state of the schools is going to take a look at.
Dr. Brown, I just have a question for you because something has been brought up to my attention, is that teachers have been told that, by administration, that we, as a school committee, want test scores to be at 100%, which I said is not accurate, we just want them to be at meeting or exceeding state requirements. So could you clarify that and explain exactly what we're asking? It's not that we want kids to be at 100%.
No, the only item that is close to that is the graduation rate, and that you did ask that we have a 95% graduation rate by 2025. But the goals the board set did tie to state assessments, and it was that every student, not some, not most, would meet at least the state minimum in terms of meeting or exceeding that average. I don't know where that 100% came- I don't know where that 100% came from.
I either.
I, in my newsletter for Sunday, I put the board goals in, right from the text from the August 19th board meeting. And that doesn't speak to 100% either.
That's why I wanted to clarify, because I was told that, and I said, "No, that was never, that's not." And I don't know if there was a misunderstanding with, like you said, the graduation rate might have been misconstrued, so I wanted to clarify. Thank you.
You're welcome. And that's it from my report.
Any other questions for Dr. Brown? All right, moving on. School Committee Chairperson's report. So last time we gathered together, we, I gave you some homework to basically review the MSBA resolutions that are their proposed resolutions for the delegation that is coming up. So at this time, and we'll vote whether or not we accept the resolutions a little later on during the meeting, but at this point, we need to give some feedback on, on these four different, these four different proposed resolutions. So I'm gonna open up the floor to conversation on, on the first one. So the four of them are just to, just to restate them, the development of a distance learning plan, building stronger family support for education, equity in education, as well as board meeting remote participation. So let's start with the development of the distance learning plan. I'm gonna open it up for conversation on that. Anyone have any comments or feedback they want to give to the, to the delegate that we nominate? Seeing none, my only questions were, I did have a couple of questions when it talked about the development of online curriculums. I just have questions which will probably be brought to the delegation. Are these distance learning plans done by each district, or is this a statewide plan? I question what the DOE's involvement is in this. Development of these online curriculums appropriate to age groups? I just question who's developing them? Will there be compensation for them? I think because of the situations we're in, we do have distance learning plans. I just want some more, I just have some questions to ask regarding this. Yep? Brian?
Vote on it later. Can we vote on them independently?
You want to vote on them individually? Sure.
So that way, if there's ones that we don't want, or we vote down versus vote up, that way, when that delegate reports back, they can report back on an individual basis versus, you know, maybe five of, or I don't know how many there are, but-
Sure. Yeah, absolutely.
Maybe half of them are good and half of them we don't appreciate or don't like, I guess.
Okay. Is there any feedback you want to give on, on, anyone else want to give a particular feedback on the development of the learning plan?
I guess I also would wonder, once COVID is over, what this is gonna look like and what the ultimate goal of this is. That's one of my concerns, is the ultimate goal of distance learning.
All right. Any other questions, concerns?
Maybe a far-fetched concern, but this seems like a step away from local control. And if that's the way this, it seems that's the way the state is inching its way to, which would be of a concern.
Is this sort of in alignment with the question that I have, like, what's the DOE's involvement in all of this coming back up here? Okay, so is this a step away from local control? Okay. Any other questions or comments that we want to bring forward with this? All right, let's move on to the family support for education. Any questions here? Comments here? It's really pushing for greater involvement by parents or guardians in their child's education, which is essential. Seeing none, I'll move on. All right. Equity in education. How about that one? All right, seeing none, I will move on to. So if I'm hearing nothing, then at that point, there's, in my, in my mind, the delegate is going to go forth with just whatever questions that we have, or lack of, you know, not report any comments. How about board meeting remote participation? I think this was in a direct reflection with the open meeting law, the FOAA. Again, any questions, comments on that one? Okay. All right. Seeing none, so we take them as is. The delegation is to be held, so I've gone back to the, gone back to the agenda. The delegation's to be held virtually on Friday, October 30th, at 3:30. That is not, that has nothing to do with the conference, sorry, the conference is separate from that. And so the delegate would be attending this meeting on October 30th at 3:30. They would be attending it virtually. Okay? Any other questions, comments on any of this before we move on?
I would like to say that I could not be a delegate, I work. Just to put that out there.
Okay. We can get to that piece when we do the voting for it. All right. City Council update. Mr. Carrier.
The, there's just been a lot of discussion currently about the budget. The, just bringing it forward, it's nothing different than I said last time. The city is looking at some really hard budget stances for the next several years. And just wanted to pass on that, as the school department's budget is one-half of the city budget, those items will probably be coming to us in a, in a way to have a strong look at our budget and see what we're going with it.
I believe we are meeting with city council. I don't believe that we've RSVP'd our date yet. I'm not sure that you've passed the date along.
We have.
We have.
December 21st.
Okay.
November 21st.
December 21st. 12/21. 12/21 is the date that we will be meeting with city council to start the conversation with them about, about budget. Okay? All right. Committee reports. Policy Committee Agenda and Minutes. I can say that I do fully appreciate having all of the, just the agenda and the meeting minutes, I think is so very helpful to hear what, what is being discussed and brought up. So thank you for that, for that shift. Is there anything else that needs to be added for policy committee reports tonight, other than what's in our? All right. Finance Subcommittee. Mr. Carrier, Mr. Simpson.
All right. Just some, some updates where we were. We talked about CRF-1. If you looked at your budget package in there on page 25, you'll see that we're halfway through the funds for CRF-1. We have utilized, going forward into CRF-2, we have utilized those funds, and we are actually starting to see some of the items show up. All five of the vans are here now, I believe. The two extra buses that we ordered, one of them was in, I think the other one is still out. Are they both here?
You are correct. One's in, one's out, as of Friday. What's it change today?
We are supposed to be starting to receive the new computers this week, I actually thought. And one of the vans will help us with that because, as we've done it before, it's not like we're, you know, you turn one in, you turn one in, you turn one in. We've got 1,200 computers to get out, and then one of the new vans will help with that. One of the other things that Peter brought up was the fact that we are currently ahead of schedule. The audiovisual AV was supposed to be working at the high school and then moving on to the middle school. They have completed the high school with maybe the exception of one or two classrooms downstairs, basement, or, oh, okay, well, that's one of them. They're basically finished with the high school, and they're moving on to the middle school, starting to work there. So they are working ahead of a schedule, so that is a benefit. And as it looks right now, we have accounted for all the CRF-2 money. As far as the rest of it, the bills are coming in exactly as they were supposed to, and you looked at the grants and stuff, we're right where we're supposed to be with those also.
All right. Wonderful. Let's take a motion to accept the finance report for September 2020 as presented.
Second.
There, thank you, Mr. Simpson. All those in favor? Seeing none opposed? Finance report passes. All right. Any other subcommittees that need to report out before I move on?
I just would like to, the Community Learning Center has scheduled a Zoom check-in on November 10th, that I would be able to-
And I am, Shelley and I are still waiting on some information for, to come in before we meet curriculum Subcommittee. All right. Moving on. Old business, got lots of policies here. And the policies are now being attached. If you'll notice, there are two ways. You can either click on them when you get them electronically on your agenda, or if you keep scrolling and scrolling and scrolling through all the, typically, our packets are about 50 pages long, so if you keep scrolling, you'll find them there as well. So moving on to old business. Here we go. Can I entertain a motion to approve policy ECA, which is the school safety and security video safety cameras for a second reading and adoption?
I'm moved.
Second.
Carrier, thank you, Mr. Bellknap. All those in favor? Seeing none opposed? Policy passes. Policy EHB, school records retention policy. Can I entertain a motion to approve policy EHB?
I'm moved.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Carrier, thank you, Mr. Bellknap. All those in favor? Seeing none opposed? Motion passes. New business. So this is the election for the delegate to the main school board delegate assembly. Like I said, this person needs to be available on October 30th at 3:30 in the afternoon. I'm gonna open it up before, before we bring this to a vote. I'm gonna open it up to see if there's public comment on this, which I don't believe there was any in the other room. I don't think anyone else walked by.
Someone in there.
Oh.
No, I'm sorry. Spray bottle.
I think that's a spray bottle.
My women.
Very skinny little-
Chuck his water bottle. All right, ladies and gentlemen, so we, we need to elect someone. We need to elect someone to attend this, this delegation. I am very mindful and respectful of the fact that there are many of you who are not available at 3:30 on a Friday afternoon because of work. So at this point, I guess the conversation is, who would be available at this point?
Big Dan would be.
Yeah. So non-nice. All right. I know that I am available, as, as one human being who's available. Not that I'm trying to, you know, but I know that I am available. My work schedule allows it. And I'm not, no. Pam, you've already said you work. Most of us are working. Brian, are you available as a potential, as a potential? Could you potentially be available?
Yes.
Okay. And I'm gonna end the pane, and I'm going to, well, can I make a motion to approve myself as the delegate?
I'd make that motion.
I'll make a motion.
To nominate Karen as our delegate for the MSBA.
I'm moved.
All right. Yeah, all those in favor? Yeah, seeing, Mr. Carrier, are you in favor of that one? Okay, thank you. Any opposed? Can I put my hand up? All right. Motion passes. So now we need, just in case something happens to me, we need the election of an alternate to the delegate assembly. So I'm gonna nominate Brian Bellknap as an alternate.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor? Seeing none opposed? Oops, sorry, everyone, seeing none opposed? Okay, so I will attend, and Brian will attend in my place. So now, at this point, the consideration of the proposed resolutions. Brian, I will break them apart. I think that is, I think that's where we can go. All right, let me pull them back up. So what I'm gonna do is ask you for a vote. So what you are doing is you are either supporting, this is a motion to support the, the resolution, or you do not support it. So let's take it one by one. Can I entertain a motion to support the resolution of development of a distance learning plan? Yeah. I was a little bit-
I think we have questions before we can, like, yeah.
Yeah.
We have, yeah, questions about, I, I just feel like I need to know more about all of these.
So I would say that that's where it, it's, it moves to, and correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Brown, but this is where, these are still proposed resolutions, so they have to be put all the way through and, and voted on at the actual delegation itself.
That's right. What happens is, to pass a, a resolution, it has to be passed by two-thirds of the delegate assembly. And so those delegates debate whether they want to adopt this as part of a MSBA resolution, and if, then they call for a vote, and if it passes by two-thirds, then it's considered passed.
So why are we having to vote on it? Well, we-
A delegate will-
Right, Karen, we're, we're-
Exactly.
Basically letting it know whether we support it or not.
Right. Yep. Our votes aren't counted, it just gives Karen direction on which way to vote. Yep. Yep. So Brian wanted to do individual. So right now, if no one wants to bring the motion forward, or even, you know, put it out there on the table, we can't have any other conversation here unless we put a motion on the table. Make sense? Except if you don't want a motion, I will move on.
I'll make a motion. We don't endorse-
That'll, that'll work. I would second that.
So you put a motion on the table? Are you putting a motion on the table? Well, she's just voting, he's voting to not support it.
Right.
Okay.
No support. Right.
For all of them or for one?
Just for number one.
First one, right?
Number one.
Number one.
Was he voted on one at a time, or is it a?
Yes.
Oh, okay. I was, my motion was to not support the development of the distance learning.
Okay. Okay. And you seconded that, Brian Bellknap?
Yes.
Okay. All right. All those in favor, no supporting the distance learning plan. All right. The motion passes for nothing. All right, moving on. So my conversation back with them is that the Auburn School Committee is not in favor of supporting a general, a distance learning plan, then? Is that correct? I'm gonna make sure I got it right. Okay. All right. Building stronger family support for, for education. Do we have a, a motion to support this proposed resolution from the Auburn School Committee? I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a motion to-
Support it.
To support this. Absolutely. Do I have a second to support? Thank you, Pam. All those in favor to support this resolution? One, two, three. All right, split three, three on that one. I will report that one back.
I just want to, the reason I, I'm not in favor of it is the way this is worded.
Okay. What do you want me to tell them?
It's incredibly presumptive that, to say, parents and guardians who are not engaged, and I don't know how we know that, and I think it's a huge assumption, I think they're definitely part of the, you know, a child's learning, but, I don't know, I, I feel like this is saying, we're slowly gonna take what you do away. That's how-
Okay.
I feel like it's, I feel like-
My opinion also, I don't like the wording of it at all.
It's too vague. It's too vague. On what that exactly means.
It's too, yeah.
Right.
That's just, that's, I mean-
Okay.
I guess I'm looking at it in the opposite way, is that giving more accountability to the families, as opposed to always, you know, it all being the responsibility of the school and putting it bearing the responsibility on the family and the parents, as well as the school.
The more shared responsibility.
Yeah, that's the way I'm kind of looking at it. Maybe I'm, I may be wrong.
So I will ask those clarifying questions at the delegate assembly, then, absolutely. All right. Equity in education is the next, is the next proposal that they have. Anyone want to, and I don't want to change the motion, what, you know?
I motion to support.
You have a second for Pam? I'll second that motion. Okay. Discussion, debate, conversation. You can bring it up now that there's a motion on the table.
Same concern. It's, I just feel like-
Same. Yep.
Owned here, we should own that.
Yep, absolutely.
I mean, it's policies we're supposed to be following in it anyway. It's not, we're gonna develop something new that's gonna be all-inclusive, that will remove everything we are already doing, not only by law, but by simply by the fact that we've been doing it all along. So that's something that I would leave to local control. We're not, we're not gonna violate state or federal law, so obviously, we're going to follow the rules.
I guess I'm misunderstanding this. Can you explain this a little bit more? I'm sorry. I guess I'm misunderstanding this.
So, once a year, and correct me if I'm wrong, so this is, you got this, you got this handout, too, right? The purpose of the-
And I read it, yeah.
Yep, yep, the purpose of them. So they adopt, the MSBA delegate adopts resolutions that they sort of, I think, in, in reaction to sort of what's going on around, around them. But they are only, so they would take these resolutions, and I believe, bring it up to bring it up to the state level if they needed to. Is that correct? Or this could help impact legislative decisions or just an understanding what school committees around the state of Maine are in agreement or not in agreement with? This is a little above my pay grade on this conversation so far, so.
You're doing really well. I think you got it. You got it exactly right. And so what the, the delegate assembly is a deliberative body and they vote on the positions of the main school boards association. Some of those positions may inform legislation at a later date. So I think the last one about board member remote participation is an example of that. That would be a change to the public records policy and freedom of information. And so that would in fact be a bill that someone from the main school boards association would ask a legislator to sponsor. And so that, this is one example of that, that you would, as a school boards association, go to a legislator and say, we'd like you to sponsor this legislation on our behalf.
So what, what you're saying is this will become a law and a rule that we'll have to follow? Is, because it seems like everyone's afraid that they're going to be taking our power away or taking away local power. So I guess that's where my confusion is. Is this taking, if they enact these things like equity? I mean, I can't see how that's bad, equity in education, but I guess I'm not seeing it. Is, are they taking it away from us by, you know, taking away local control? By, are they mandating that this, they're going to find a way that this is how we have to do it and we have to follow them and we have no other alternative?
Well, if you've ever watched the development of a bill try to get passed at the legislature, sometimes what you begin with is not what you end with. And you go through that process and it either dies in committee or it gets passed or it gets modified. But it's hard to answer your question because it's like working up each level. And so the school boards association decides through its delegate assembly that this resolution, they would like to see sponsored in legislation. They find a legislature who's sympathetic and you give them the idea and they, they form it into an LD or a bill and then it goes to a committee. And then if the committee passes it, then it goes on to the full body for deliberation. So it's a, it's a long way from telling us what to do at the local level. I mean, I suppose you could get there, but that's, that's essentially the process.
So how would equity in education be bad? I guess. Why would?
Because we're already doing it. Why, why have somebody legislate something to us that we're already? You have, you have protocols that you follow by at the hospital. You need the state to come in and say, oh, you need to follow by these? You're already doing it. Those are, there are already guidelines for that.
So you're, but she's not saying that they're going to come and tell us what to do.
But why would you, my, why put it out there? We don't need it. We're already following state law. There doesn't need to be another law. We were already supposed to be doing this. And if I'm not mistaken, it was even in your contract that you reviewed this as part of your goals is equity in education and racial bias. So we're already doing it. Why do we need to do it again?
Then what's the point of all this? I guess.
Exactly.
I mean, please educate me. I don't know. Like, I just, this is.
I think, I think really just to help, well, number one talks about, you know, adopts resolutions that express the beliefs and purposes of the association. So are these the beliefs and the, is this what we are saying? We are in agreement with these purposes and beliefs? And we want to bring this, you know, to the entire, this is what Auburn is thinking of these resolutions.
See, that's what I initially thought is, okay, are we, are we in agreement with that? Yes, we're in agreement with equity in education. You know, we're in agreement with support in education and family support. And, you know, obviously with the pandemic, we are in agreement with distance learning plan. We need a distance learning plan. So that's why I'm like, I didn't realize it was like we were going to enact laws with this. I just thought it was like, yes.
Very, very beginning of that.
It's a very, 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 very.
The part that I will agree with, and we're jumping ahead a little bit, I would agree with them doing something, making it permanent where we do stuff remotely because that's going to be our life going forward. You know, we will have a school committee meeting and two people will be sick and another person will be out of state. But we can still have the meeting because we're going to do it resume. I would, I would vote for that because the law needs to change as we have progressed, you know, having audiovisual to be able to do stuff in real. I would support that. But the other stuff that we're already doing, I don't see a need to reinvent the wheel. We're already doing it.
But are they reinventing the wheel or are they improving the way it is? Because some would tell you that equity in education is not there, that there's a lot of issues with equity in education. I mean, I'm just saying, putting devil's advocate.
I would agree with that.
There are some people who would say that.
But from where it's, from my standpoint, if we're already doing something, why do we need them to suggest this later on? We're already following all our guidelines. So to me, this is, you know, if they wanted to address certain schools, that would be telling the schools, okay, you guys all need to get on board with state regulations. We don't need them to develop something that's already there. You follow regulations set out by all your organizations? We don't need for them to develop something else. We've already got enough layers. We don't need to add another one.
So right now, we have a motion to support the equity in education resolution. So I'm going to take a vote on the, all those in favor to support this resolution. I'm going to support. And all those in favor, those say no. One, two, three, four. Okay. So this is not a resolution we would like. All right. And the last one, a motion to support a board meeting remote participation. Can I entertain a motion to support this resolution?
I'm moved.
Sorry, Brian Bellnapp and Brian Carrier, I believe. Okay. Any conversation on this one?
This would make sense because it requires legislation to change the rule.
Okay.
We can't do that. Like, we have no, you know what I mean? It's like, for us to do this, we need them to advocate and legislate.
Right now, we're only working under a governor's mandate. We need this to become law. This part of it.
Which is why I support this.
And just to get back to your, what we were talking about earlier. Karen's going to take this forward and say, look, we don't agree with these three, but we agree with this one. But if the rest of the state all agrees with it, they're going to do it anyway. But we just are, we're just saying, look, we don't agree with this part of it. And we, and she can tell them, look, we don't agree with the first part. It's got some bad language. It's not clear enough for us. The second part, yeah, you've got to rework that language because it's been a lot of. But overall, they're going to do what they want. We just need to let them know this is what we think about it.
I know. I just want to kind of a clarification. I don't work at this, in the state. I don't work with, you know what I mean? This is, and I want to be able to be, I just want to be well-versed before I decide to do anything. I appreciate the feedback. Thank you.
All right. So all those in favor of the board meeting remote participation? Seeing none opposed? We support that resolution. All right. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. I will, took notes and bring your feedback back. All right, moving on. Policy ECB pest management in school facilities and on school grounds. Can I entertain a motion to approve policy ECB?
I'm moved.
Thank you, Brian Bellnapp. Have a second? Brian Carrier, all those in favor? Seeing none opposed? Motion passes. Policy ECB-E, notice of planned pesticide application. A motion to approve policy ECB-E. Thank you, Brian Carrier. You have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Simpson. All those in favor? Seeing none opposed? Motion passes. Pest management notification, a motion to approve policy ECB-EI. Can I entertain a motion to approve policy ECB-CI? Thank you, Mr. Carrier. Thank you, Mr. Bellnapp. All those in favor? Seeing none opposed? Motion passes. And policy EGAD, copyright compliance, a motion to approve policy EGAD. I think I have Brian Bellnapp and I think Brian Carrier as well. All those in favor? Seeing none opposed? Motion passes. Policy EGAD, copyright compliance administrative procedure, motion to approve policy EGAD. I just got you in tandem tonight. All right. All those in favor? Motion passes, none approved. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we've come to the end of our, our meeting. Our next meeting for November 4th, we will be having an executive session[1678.24]